Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We will start our council meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held January 27, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We'd move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That takes us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity every two weeks where city council creates some time for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I don't see anybody in the gallery tonight. I think maybe the cold weather has kept everybody away. But we do want to remind the public that this is an opportunity to come forward to address council. If you so wish, we'll move on from the delegation portion. We had no public hearings, no unfinished business, and we go right into reports. And item 8.1 is a recommendation for an appointment to the Grand Prairie Sports Council. Council has that administrative report in their package. The sports council is up and active and has asked to have an appointee. And so if I could get a motion for that, my recommendation there. Counselor Logan.
Yes, with pleasure, I'd like to see council approve the mayor's recommendation to appoint Counselor Clayton.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. And thanks, Counselor Clayton, for accepting that, my recommendation. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Counselor Clayton, here's who likes you. Everybody? You're okay? Thanks, Counselor Clayton, for taking that on with the new sports council as they get started in their inaugural year. We move to 9.1, the Special Community Growth Committee. And Counselor O'Toole, I think you chaired that one. Could you move the minutes from that meeting?
Yes, I will move the council's minutes.
Just make sure your microphone's on there.
Sorry about that. I move that council receive the minutes of the Special Community Growth Committee meeting held on January 13, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and those minutes are adopted. 9.2, the 100th Anniversary Committee. Counselor Thiessen, are you going to stand in for Counselor Rice, who was chairing that one?
Sure will.
If you'd like to make the motion to receive those minutes?
Yeah, let's see, all my mic's not on. There we go. All right, I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held on January 15, 2014, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing again, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion is carried. Counselor Thiessen, anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
There's a few things really to talk about with the 100th Anniversary. But right now, our big movement is on sponsorship. And Terry Sudneck, our coordinator of all the events, she recently landed a big sponsor with Palmeroy Group. So they will be our event sponsors throughout the 100 years. So it's a big feather in their cap and a big feather in ours to have them involved in the event. So that would be one thing that I'd love to highlight off of the minutes.
Thanks very much for that. And welcome to the Palmeroy Group. And certainly appreciate them being such a great community partner. So we move to 9.3, the council committee of the whole meeting from January 20. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held January 20, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note anything out of place in that set of minutes? Everything looks like it came in as it was supposed to. So I'll call for the vote to adopt them. Thank you. That motion carries too. And so I think 9.4, Community Living Committee. Counselor Radburn, I think that that was your set of minutes from that meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held on January 28, 2014.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Thank you. I'll call for the vote. Thanks very much. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council adopt and endorse the Northwest Alberta Children's Charter of Rights as presented. We had a delegation that came forward and asked us to consider, I guess, celebrating the National Child Day in Canada on November 20. And I think we had done that last year as well. And she shared a charter. And I'm just going to, I think they're useful guiding principles for us, is how I see us looking at these. It starts by saying whoever we are, we are children first, and these are the rights of all of us. And I'm just, I'll just highlight the guiding principles. The right to be safe and healthy, the right to be loved, to make friends, the right to be themselves, the right to be heard, the right to play, the right to nature and fresh air, the right to lifelong learning, and the right to belong. And so the motion reflects, I guess, our wish to look at them as guiding principles. How we're actually going to operationalize that use, I think, will evolve as we proceed through our strategic planning. But I think they're, they fit in terms of helping guide municipalities or whatever as we deliver services and make decisions. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of principles that council will be formally endorsing here? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries as well. Counselor Radburn, was there any other business from that committee meeting?
There was. So if I take a moment, Mayor Given, we had a delegation from Tracy Vabrick, a community foundation of Greater Grand Prairie. She kind of reported on the vital signs, most recent vital signs report. We also had a delegation from the Grand Prairie Public Library Board and Maureen Curry requesting additional monies for the capital project, read the library expansion of space, I guess, upstairs. And that was dealt with by asking admin to report back with respect to potential funding sources, alternate, et cetera. And so that will be coming, I think, not tomorrow, but in a couple of weeks. We had a draft of the outdoor festivals and special events bylaw. And we had some discussion of some cost recoveries and some permit numbers, costs. And we've asked administration to bring back revisions back to committee to reflect that discussion. We received information on the South Bear Creek stage. It will be dismantled. And yes, it's just too expensive to upgrade. And most promoters bring their own stage, et cetera, in a way. We received a report saying that the request from last council with respect to kilometer markers within Musquesseepee will happen by the summer from within that department's budget. And finally, we received an update on the Culture and Heritage Department review. And we should receive that for information. Good process, some good recommendations that we will see over the next year or so. Action on those. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the update, Counselor Radburn. That takes us to 9.5, the Community Safety Committee from February 4. Counselor McLean, I think that was you again.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held February 4, 2014.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? I feel like, you know, I have to ask, right? Just in case there was something. I know our Legislative Services Department pretty much always gets it right. But every once in a while, there's something that slips through. But is there any discussion or debate on this set of minutes? Looks like nothing slipped through on this one, so I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, do you want to handle the business coming out of that meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Just speak to a couple of issues while, one, I'll just flip into it here.
9.5.1 there?
Yeah. Just lost a sheet here. I'm just about there. Yes, I'm going to move that council adopt the Storm Drainage Master Plan and supplemental Richmond Industrial Park Storm Basin Study.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the Storm Drainage Master Plan and the recommendation? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, I think you had one other piece of business coming out of that meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council enter a contract with the Grand Prairie and District SPCA for the operation of the Regional Animal Pound for 2014 in the amount of $267,836 plus GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Discussion, debate, questions and comments? Counselor Clayton, I see you're in the queue.
I would just like to declare conflict on this as I sit on the SPCA board as a volunteer.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Clayton. So Counselor Clayton will declare conflict of interest. And so I will, and we'll leave the chambers. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn.
Just very quickly, we've had a longstanding partnership, I guess, with the SPCA and the county. This new agreement makes it a joint contract, joint agreement, so there's not two separate agreements, which I think is a step forward. And I think by working together, they've looked at a budget, and I think of the 60-40, city, county, city 60, county 40. The numbers came to 267. We thought that was fair to move the contract forward.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We could call Counselor Clayton back into the council chambers.
I just wanted to speak on one thing.
Sure. Counselor McLean, if you wanted to speak to one of the other items on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to speak to accessible taxi partnership. And this is something I'm very excited about. The previous council and as well as this one have been going in this direction to hopefully get it done. And it's looking like it's going to be a year program to see how it's laid out. The city leasing the taxi, maintaining the taxi, and then there'll be an RFP put out for someone to provide the service, to go out there and to deliver the service. But I think this is a very, very positive move by the city of Grand Prairie. And someone said 12-month period of seeing how it goes, but I don't see us going back. I think it's going to be very positive.
Certainly good news. Was there anything else from that meeting? I think you covered all the business. And if so, then we go to 9.6, the Municipal Government Day Committee from February 4. And Counselor Thiessen, I think you were chairing that committee.
I was. Thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, it was my first time in the chair, so I really appreciated that opportunity to head up the troops, especially for Municipal Government Day. So in saying that, I would like to move that council receive the minutes of the Municipal Government Day Committee meeting held on February 4, 2014.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the set of minutes we're about to adopt? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Excuse me, did I? I think I missed somebody there. Sorry. Sorry. Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. So we'll redo that vote. Excuse me. So I'll call for the vote again. Okay, there we go. And there's all eight entered in. Sorry, I was too quick on the trigger, Counselor Thiessen. My mistake. That motion carries. And 9.6.2, Counselor Thiessen.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Given.
9.1, excuse me?
Yes. I would move that council approve the 2014 Municipal Government Day event to be held at Musqueseepee Park on June 11, 2014, as per the minutes.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the recommended date and location? Musqueseepee Park's been a great venue in the past, and obviously the committee discussed the date and thinks that's going to be the best time. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. If there's no discussion? Thank you. That motion's carried. Counselor Thiessen.
All right, thank you again. I also move that council approve the 2014 Municipal Government Day program as presented.
Sure. Counselor Thiessen, do you want to just pick out a couple of highlights out of the program?
Yeah, for sure. Some of the things that we talked about, actually, I'd like to talk a little bit about the event too. I think it was determined that the date was a perfect fit, considering that a lot of our council was going to be at FCM the week before that and traveling back. So we decided on that. We just got clearance from Musqueseepee Park that it was okay. Part of the other ideas you'll see in the minutes was to potentially change it to the Montrose Cultural Field Site, at least for the location of that. We decided against it because we figured if it ain't broke, why fix it? Also, to quote Counselor Radburn at the meeting, he's, you know, our city crew, our staff puts in a lot of hard work and effort in order to make every municipal government day a success, as they have been. So we decided to not create any extra work for them and to allow them to do the wonderful job they do in bringing Municipal Government Day to us. And again, going back to the program now, in some of the things that we talked about was again to have the same displays set up, different city vehicles as well, doing a youth contest, getting into the schools and having them do different art designs and stuff. And also deciding on a theme, which we thought last year was 99 and Counting, I believe. This year, we're going 100 years young, considering that we are a young community and on our 100th anniversary as well. So there's lots that's going to be had, and it's going to be another great eventful day. Hopefully, the weather will be a little bit better this year round, so.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So we had in there the motion to adopt the program as presented. Any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor Thiessen, I think you had one more motion coming out of that committee.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Given. We talked about potentially changing the terms of reference, I guess, to the Municipal Government Day. Some had thought maybe Grand Prairie Day would be suitable. But we decided just to clean up some of the terminology. We like the Municipal Government Day. So in this is the recommendation that council approved the updated terms of reference for the Municipal Government Day team, noting the amendment of changing alderman to councillor.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? I see Counselor McLean in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I was at the committee, I sit on the committee. I was very proud. The name change alderman councillor makes sense. But I can remember standing up at the county conference and accepting a word of excellence because of Miss O'Gorman Day. And I remember Bill Given accepting it at Day UMA. And we were the only place in Alberta that done this for Miss O'Gorman Day. And it means a lot, and it's what we bring in the services in the city. And so I'm very proud of that. I did not know at the time we were the only city that did offer this. Now, maybe there's one more that maybe come on the radar the last year, but this is very good, and I look forward to the day.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing nobody else in the queue, I just want to endorse the committee's position to keep the name. I think for me, the special part of Municipal Government Day is actually to celebrate the work that municipal staff do and highlight the work that they do in the community for the community. And so I think that keeping the name is a really important part of keeping that focus. So glad to see that you chose to keep it. So if there's nothing else, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there anything else to highlight from that meeting, Counselor Thiessen?
Not really. I think we're all really excited, and I think I uber highlighted it as we went through all the recommendations. The only other thing that I think I might have left out is we're looking into currently taking photos of kids inside different equipment, like our graders and fire trucks and stuff like that. So that'll be a different spin on how we did things at the last year's event, so that would be about it.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Looking forward to the event coming together. So I think that handles all of our committee business. We had no correspondence today, no delegations. I don't think we have any notices of motion coming to council. That would take us into council member reports for council members who are appointed to external agencies, boards, or commissions. And Counselor O'Toole, you said that you had something for the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's been in the news that the Dino Ball will be opening in August this year. And I just got a few people that have confirmed attendance that are not residents of Grand Prairie, but the Canadian tenors have confirmed for sure that they will be here. Fran Drescher will be here. Maybe you know her from the nanny. Tatum O'Neill, believe it or not, and her daughter Emily will be here. The Blues Brothers will be reenacted. And we'll just go from there. Matthew Gray-Goobler has been a longtime supporter, and he will be here as well. I've got a couple more things that I'd like to bring up. Tickets are over 600 sold. We've got a couple of local residents that said, you know what, don't really want to give you a bunch of money, but we'll buy two tables and we'll give you $50,000. We've got a couple, four tables, that either people have paid $25,000 or $35,000 for. Presently, we have 47 items for the silent auction. One more thing I forgot to tell you is Michael Budman, the co-founder and CEO of Roots Canada will be here. Local businessman Tim Powell is hosting a supper for those individuals that have sponsored over $25,000 to the board and the commitment of the museum. And they will be having five local chefs that are in Grand Prairie here. We'll be doing a top chef contest out at Tim Powell's place. And the Canadian tenors will be entertaining that particular night. No, I'm not going. CBC has announced that they will be doing a one-hour documentary, and the documentary will be released later on. The program consists of the disaster that initially took place to create the dinosaur River of Death, the bone bed, and the findings that were the discovery in 1974. And basically, the story of the funding, the architectural, and the building of the On January 15, Stratichase Magazine from Chicago will be doing, sent an inquiry that they will be doing pictures and will be featured in their magazine upcoming. Page two. The fourth coin in the set of the glow-in-the-dark coins that were done basically for paleontology have been released just the last, on Friday, I think it was. So that final four set is now complete. Julius Constantini and Louis LeVoy have been confirmed their return to the ball, and they will be doing live artist work. And I can tell you that Julius is the official artist for the Royal Ontario Museum, and he's the paleo artist for the Philip J. Currie Museum. So they'll see a lot of his artwork in there, in the building when it's completed. And just want to make sure I get everybody in there. Seven Generations is a local business here in town, in an oil field, has taken on the task of supplying all the information and doing whatever they could to represent the oil activity and the basis of the oil process for the dinosaur museum. They were going to, they've got a huge donation that they're going to make. And also, they will be having displays there that they're going to supply all the stuff for. And Muse Magazine, of course, from Toronto, and they're doing a story. And yeah, I'll leave that for the time being. And I got a lot more. I'm just highlighting some of the stuff, so next meeting, I'll have more.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Never wanted to keep people in suspense.
No.
Drag it up to the next meeting. Very much, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And you know what? I think that was all of our reports from externals. And so, Counselor O'Toole, we might as well start roundtable with you, and we'll go around counterclockwise.
In the last, since the last meeting, I attended 11 events. On January 31, I had the opportunity to give a proclamation reading, making the month of February the heart and stroke month. And I was pretty excited. February 21, the Canadian Tire Chamber Call and Awards Night, I was there. And just making things aware that the building of the Philip J. Museum is going well, the structure is going up without any issues, project is doing well, roof line is starting to take shape with lots of inquiries about the roof. And after the last major windstorm that we had here, there was a lot of inquiries thinking that maybe the roof had been damaged because it's got all kinds of little angles and dangles on it. But I can tell you that the roof is holding up very strong. Other than that, it's doing well. Very proud of PCL being on the job. They're very conscious of time and effort and costs, so. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So Counselor Thiessen.
I thought I was going to speak last, but thank you, Mayor Given. Over the past two weeks since the last council meeting, I had the privilege of attending five different events. Just to highlight a couple of them that I thought were quite amazing. The ribbon cutting for the First Annual Swimsuit Skate at our oval track at the Eastlink Centre. I attended with Counselor O'Toole and Counselor Radburn. It was quite an interesting event, especially when the guy in the lime green bikini, like, slid across the ice and looked like he got some good frostbite on his back and buttocks, which was highly entertaining, and the whole family enjoyed it. Another one too, on February 6, I attended the Crime Prevention Annual Evening of Appreciation Success, where we were able to appreciate the work of several different individuals in our community who had contributed to making not only our community a better place, but a safer place to live in as well. So it was an honor to be there, to see Kevin McLean as honorary mayor in action. And then finally, on January 30, a big highlight for me this last two weeks was being given the opportunity to be the keynote speaker at Derek Taylor Junior High School, speaking to the kids there about careers and how to recognize their own emotional intelligence, therefore pushing themselves to what really drives them and makes them successful. I thought I might talk a little bit about being a city councillor, but I didn't do that. I just went along the idea of, hey, I used to be a junior high kid too, and here's how life was for me. So I think I kind of understand. The kids were really warm to it. The teachers gave me lots of great feedback afterwards. So it was a great time had by all. And then I got to fill in on one classroom right after the keynote speech, where I took questions on being a city councillor, such as, why do politicians fight all the time? And why do religious people fight all the time about religion? Those are tough questions to answer, but great ones from the kids. And it was glorious. So those are tough questions to answer, but great ones from the kids, and it was a glorious time, so that's what I did in the last two weeks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Logan.
What do you mean, we fight all the time? I've been making a practice of attending as many of the committee, standing committee meetings as I can, given that I'm retired now and have the time to do so. I was really pleased with the Community Safety Committee on February 4 and the new contract with the SPCA. Carol and I have been long-term supporters of the SPCA, going back too many years to speak of. And to celebrate the good contract we have, along with the cooperation of the county of Grand Prairie, Carol and I ventured to the SPCA and adopted a dog, which was probably great timing for us, but not so good for the dog with the cold front that came in because it's a little chihuahua, and he hasn't stopped shaking. Anyway, really commend the SPCA and the work they do, the professionalism that they have, and you can trust the job that they do if you go by.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan, not the least of which for giving a good dog a warm home. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. There's quite a few events, but a few of them, I'll just speak about. Municipal Government Day meeting we had, I'll speak to it because it was the first one that Chris Thiessen chaired, and I was glad to be there, and he did a very, very well job on it. As well, that evening, I went to an open house at a Palmeroy for Leader of the Wild, Rose Daniel Smith was in. And then the next day, majority of the council welcomed Daniel Smith here, as well as some counterparts for, thank you for coming to the city and seeing us. As well, that same day, we had the Arts Development Committee, and I was glad for that because it was the first chair that Councilor Rory Tarrant performed, and he did a very good job. And the majority of the money is gone, $65,000 to $70,000, so it was a very, very busy committee, and very good job for your first one. And so also, I attended the Crime Prevention Seventh Annual Appreciation and Success Night, and you can go on with the 10 different recipients that were there for the awards, but one I want to speak to is Hanson Ford. If you buy a pickup or used vehicle from there throughout a certain duration, they will pick you up at a pub and take you home and pay for the bill. And I think if more dealerships, more private companies got on board with this, we would definitely help our city and make it a lot safer. So thank you, Hanson Ford. And the other one that I'll speak to today is I had a tour of the Arsenale Building with Superintendent Ray Noble, and I've been through it before, but I was glad to go there and meet again. And I just want to say closing, I'm glad you're back there, Given. It was very busy last week. Thank you.
And Counselor McLean, thanks for stepping in as deputy mayor. Each council member has a part of the calendar where they step in and have deputy mayor duties. Counselor McLean just ended up having his part of the calendar while I was away, so thanks very much for taking on that extra load. Certainly appreciate it. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. January 29, Downtown Association Board Meeting, and then in the afternoon, I had an interview, telephone interview with Doug Horner of Alberta Views, who's doing an article on Grand Prairie and our growing neighborhood associations. 30th, Grand Spirit Foundation Labor Management Meeting, and then with a number from council, I attended the information sharing session with the Chamber of Commerce. Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee Meeting on the 31st. On February 1, I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council to the Grand Prairie Hockey Legends Luncheon Induction. Congratulations to Darren McCoslin, who was inducted. Darren is a Grovedale boy who played hockey in Grand Prairie, but then went on to play, actually develop a professional hockey career, both in the United States and over in Europe. Then I attended with Counselors O'Toole and Thiessen the swimsuit skate for the speed skating oval opening. And no, we did not wear swimsuits. Others did, though, for makeup. I also attended the Council Daniel Smith Information Sharing and Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Policy Committee in the afternoon. And finally, I brought greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and council at the Crime Prevention Evening of Appreciation and Success. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Radburn. Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So as well, had a couple, busy couple of weeks here, got to attend quite a few events. I'll just note a couple. On the 30th, went to the chamber meeting with just info session. I think it was a great time to meet with our chamber members and to get, they had a few priorities that they wanted to see addressed and to see where things were at, so I think that was good. I got positive, positive feedback from our chat there. That evening, I got to go to, there was an event put on by the chamber for the medical residency program that was run through here, and so I got to chat with potential medical residency students, and it was great having that outside perspective, seeing what these professionals, young professionals are desiring in a city, and had lots of, you know, good conversations with them. And, you know, there's just amazing how, you know, some, there was, you know, the Killon at the Creative Center for Creative Arts was a huge draw, right? And they wouldn't go to a place without a Killon, and so it was good to get a good feedback from the people there. And yeah, on the 5th, I got to chair the Arts Development Committee, and it was, you know, first time chairing, it was, I felt the committee did a great job. We made a few tough decisions here and there, but I think, you know, the community is going to be served with the funds that went out from that committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton.
I as well had an opportunity to attend many things in the past few weeks. Just a couple of highlights as well as many other councillors. I attended the joint meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. It was a great opportunity to discuss plans that they have coming up and opportunities to work together. As well, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Annual President's Ball, where we were happy to celebrate the second year of Shawna Miller being chair. So congratulations to her and to the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce for putting on a great event. I'm looking forward to the first meeting this week, the sport council, so thank you for that opportunity. And as well, I had an opportunity to travel with our Economic Development Manager, Brian Glavine, who is doing an excellent job, and we had an opportunity to meet with potential retailers and developers to come to the region. It was a great session. We had very good meetings, and once again, I just want to commend Brian Glavine for the excellent work he's doing. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. As I noted before, I was actually away with my family for the last little while, and so I don't have any events to report except for today. Coming back, I had the opportunity to attend a new employee orientation with a number of city employees from various departments. And I know I've reported on these before, but councils should also know that all of the directors and the city manager take the time to be there to report on their different areas and give these new employees an opportunity to ask questions of our senior leadership so they can understand the organization better. And I think it's a great thing that we do to familiarize employees with the organization. So it was a pleasure to bring greetings on behalf of council to that employee orientation today, as my first day back into the frigid temperatures from the warm climates of St. Lucia. So believe it or not, I'm happy to be back. It's great to be here, and I think that finishes our council meeting for tonight. Thanks very much. Good night.
Chris, I thought you would have mentioned Ed.